Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 29, 2025, regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present tonight. So I do want to mention on our agenda tonight, we'll be amending our agenda. We did have an item for a closed session that we will now be removing from the agenda, so I need a motion to approve as amended. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. So our first item tonight is item 2A, which is Special Recognition Proclamation, recognizing Olympia Bicycle Month. And we have a reading of the proclamation to be read by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Whereas riding a bicycle can improve Olympia's mental and physical health well-being, and whereas bicycling can connect many community members to opportunities and resources without needing to own or maintain a car, and whereas we can make our own transportation system more fair by changing our streets to better serve people who cannot or choose to not drive, and whereas bicycling instead of driving can help us achieve our goal of net-zero emissions by 2040, reducing traffic congestion, and reaching our regional greenhouse gas emissions, reducing our targets identified in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, and whereas the city of Olympia has a bicycle network which includes a bicycle corridor, 82 miles of bicycle lanes, and eight miles of regional trail system within the city limits, and whereas the city transportation master plan includes projects to expand the bicycle network, and whereas the city's transportation benefit district sales tax collects approximately 3.1 million annually for bicycle and active transportation projects, and whereas the city's street safety plan prioritizes the safety of bicyclists among other vulnerable users of our street network, and whereas InterCity Transit, with the support of many local businesses and organizations, is hosting the 38th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May, and Bike to Work Week, May 15, 2025. Now therefore be resolved that in recognition of the 55th Earth Day and the 68th National Bike Month, the city, the Olympia City Council hereby proclaims the month of May 2025 as Olympia Bicycle Month in the city of Olympia, and encourages all community members to ride their bikes during the month of May and throughout the year. Signed, in the city of Olympia, Washington, this day, this 29th day, April 2025, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
And so at this time, I'd like to call forward Kristin Gilkerson, who is our program specialist at the city of Olympia. Hi, Kristin.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Payne and council members. Thank you for the proclamation declaring May as Olympia Bike Month. My name is Kristin Gilkerson. I'm the program specialist with the city's transportation division. Tonight, I'm joined by Duncan Green, InterCity Transit's Bicycle Community Challenge Coordinator. He'll soon share some details about the upcoming bike challenge and some other great events and programming, but first, I wanted to share a few new city projects that support bicycling in Olympia. We have two new bike corridors on the way. Bike corridors are routes on low-traffic streets with signs and pavement markings to show they are good streets for bicycling. Where they cross busy streets, we change the intersections to make them easier for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross. So we have the downtown bike corridor, which will wrap up soon. This connects cyclists from Sylvester Park downtown to the East Side Street entrance to the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail. We'll also break ground on the West Side Bike Corridor this summer. This corridor will connect bicyclists in northwest and southwest Olympia to Woodruff Park and Garfield Elementary School, so hopefully that's a nice way to get to the Spray Park during a heat wave in the summer. Next, we have a bicycle and pedestrian safety project planned for Fourth and Plum. This is right outside of City Hall, so in downtown Olympia. It's going to include a separated bike lane and changes to make that intersection safer for everyone who uses it. We also plan to change a section of Pacific and State Avenues between Sawyer and Fur Street, so that's up by Ralph's Thrift Way. This project includes parking-separated bike lanes, concrete islands, green pavement markings, and other changes to make it better for people walking and biking and rolling through that area. And last but not least, we've got the construction of the Phones Road Corridor project, so that's currently underway. This major project will turn Phones Road into a safer corridor for everyone who uses it. Bike improvements include a separated bike lane on both sides of the street, an improved crossing at the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, and much more. And so you don't have to memorize all of that. All of these details and projects are on the city's transportation website. That can be found at olympiawa.gov/transportation. And I encourage the community to hop on their bike and go check out these new projects as they come online. And now I'll turn it over to Duncan. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. For the record, my name is Duncan Green, and I'm here representing InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. Thank you, Mayor Payne and council, for declaring May as Bike Month in Olympia. May is also National Bike Month, and our month-long Bicycle Community Challenge is our local celebration of that national event, along with Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, as we call it here, on May 15 this year. The BCC and all of its supporting events are free of charge, and everyone is encouraged to participate. You can log in or create a free account at bcc.inercitytransit.com. As I think was mentioned in the proclamation, we have many local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC, with everything from donating prize items, offering discount coupons, free passes, support and venues for our events, and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support, along with a lot of volunteers that make what we do possible. So this year's theme for the BCC, which is, there's a new theme every year, and this year's, this year's theme is be a beacon for bicycling. And on that note, I just want to widen the spotlight a little bit from the Bicycle Community Challenge to include InterCity Transit's Walk and Roll program as a whole. Walk and Roll has grown into a true beacon for bicycling with a burgeoning roster of classes, activities, volunteer opportunities, and creative ways to get people on bikes and keep bikes in use by people who need them. We're partnering with schools, the statewide Cascade Bicycle Club, and several community organizations to provide education, resources, and bikes in a wide variety of settings. We teach kids and adults how to ride safely and how to maintain and equip their bikes. We have a growing pool of dedicated volunteers that are helping on all of these initiatives. There's actually literally too many of these activities to list in any kind of reasonable way right now, so please check out the Walk and Roll pages on the InterCity Transit website under the Services tab on the homepage. The BCC starts this Thursday, so it's almost time to ride in the 38th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge for fun, health, and a cleaner, greener community. It's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. The city of Olympia has a team. Just go to bcc.inercitytransit.com and sign up or log into your existing account. And feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have any questions. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have now. So just wanted to say thanks to the city, as Kristin was mentioning, all these projects that have been, that are in the works now, and all the improvements that the city has made over the years. I've lived in and around Olympia for longer than I care to mention, and when I first came here, there was no such thing as a bike lane. And so things are way better now, thanks to, thanks to the city. And InterCity Transit for supporting and enabling bicycling as a part of our transportation system. So thanks, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Duncan. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Gilman.
Duncan, I also wanted to thank you specifically for your leadership and the growth of the Bicycle Community Challenge. So much has evolved under your time at the helm. The grand prize hoopla's at the farmer's market, the winter challenge in February to encourage year-round riding, and the huge shift from the, from the bicycle commuter contest that was really mileage-focused to a community challenge that's encouraged everybody to use their bicycles, both for practical commuting and for exercise. Each of those changes has brought more people to be involved, and I think made it a little easier for folks to cycle in our community. So I'm, I'm aware that this is your, your last year leading the organization, and I, I'm just, I think both the city and I personally am so grateful for your, your leadership, your friendship, and the fun we've had on these events. And I know you'll still be there at Bike to Commute, Bike, Bike to Work today. Yeah. So thank you, Duncan.
Thanks to all of you, for sure.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I would like to say thank you, too. I mean, this is, that's one of the things I love about here in Olympia, is that we have this, not all communities have this, this, this support, these systems around, and, and having it around for so many years is key. You know, I will say that, you know, before the pandemic, I almost never rode my bike anywhere. And it's funny, because I ride it everywhere all the time, and I'm always on my e-bike all over the place. And to me, I think the two key principles to getting to a multimodal community are both getting in the habit of doing it individually. You know, I just do it everywhere. I mean, having an e-bike makes it easy. Sometimes I feel like I'm cheating, because I don't, when I go up the hills, I just put it in higher mode, and it just goes in. And it's just like, oh, look at that, I didn't have to sweat or anything. You know what I mean? Makes it easy. Technology's helped a lot, actually. And then the other part of it is, is us slowly but surely putting in those investments, those bike lanes, those protected barriers, those realigning our streets. And those investments are kind of what a lot of other countries have done, a lot of other communities have done, even in the Pacific Northwest. Because for a lot of people, if you ask people that live in areas where they ride bikes all the time, it's because it's convenient. It's not because, because of environmental reasons as much as it is people doing it, because it's like the easiest way to get around, right? And so to get there, we have to do our part as, as a community to continue to make those investments whenever there's an opportunity, whenever you have funding to do it, so that people have the opportunity, right, to, you know, it could be hard, there's a lot of pressure to do things in a very hardcore way of doing it, where it's like, you have to do it, you have to do it. And I think, I think giving people the option is really important. Giving people the, the freedom to choose is really important to our community. And so, anyway, thank you all for this, and thank you for all the years of service doing this. I appreciate it. We should, we should chat sometime soon. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Any additional comments from council? Seeing none. Duncan, I have a signed proclamation here for you, and I see the star of the show is behind you. So if you wouldn't mind bringing it forward, and then we'll come down and join you for a photo. Okay, so that concludes the special recognition portion of our agenda, and we will move on to public comment. It looks like we have four people signed up in the chamber this evening, as well as some folks online. So just a few reminders that there is a clock to my right, your left here on the wall, indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments. Two minutes, not three. I see three. There we go.
Are you sure?
Positive. So there is a box on the podium indicating that you have green, yellow, and red lights, which indicates that you have two minutes of time. The green light indicating that your time has begun. The yellow light indicates that you have about 30 seconds left in your comments, and the red light indicates that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments in the two minutes allotted, you can email them the remainder of your comments to the council. Just a reminder that we are approaching an election season, and so please refrain from expressing your support or opposition to a candidate or ballot measure, whether it's at the federal, state, or local levels. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Protan.
All right, so we'll begin with in-person public comment, and I believe there were some virtual public comments that I see in person. So, so I'll call you forward for in-person, but you'll have one opportunity to speak for public comment tonight. So first, we have Peter Gutchen, followed by Kathy Gorfus.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Peter Gutchen. I'm the vice president of the Northeast Neighborhood Association and a member of the Olympia Northeast Neighborhoods Alliance, also known as ONA, which is comprised of the Northeast, Bigelow Highlands, and East Bay Drive Neighborhood Associations. We would like to thank you again for the support you provide to Olympia's many diverse and unique neighborhoods through the Neighborhood Matching Grant Program to make our neighborhoods more beautiful, resilient, and vibrant places to live. We would also like to express our appreciation to Associate Planner Brittany Gilia, who just took over the reins of the program this year for her invaluable support, and to the members of the Neighborhood Matching Grant Review Committee for their thorough and thoughtful deliberations. Later tonight, you will be asked to approve staff's recommendations on the 2025 Neighborhood Matching Grant Proposals. Related to ONA's proposal, we would like to request that you amend staff's recommendation to allow us to use some of our grant funds to conduct art workshops with Roosevelt School fifth graders to create story flags on the theme of belonging and community, and then to install these flags in the pocket park we built in the neighborhood center at San Francisco and Bethel Streets directly across from the school. As I detailed in the emails I sent you recently, the art workshops are not standalone activities for students, but are designed to strengthen the school community's connection with the neighborhood and are essential to the success of our project. For that reason, we respectfully request you modify staff's recommendation to allow the art workshops to be included in our scope of work. Thank you again for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathy Gorfus, followed by Larry Jezza.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Payne and councilmembers for your time tonight. I'm a local artist that lives in the Northeast Neighborhood. I didn't know Peter was going to be here, but it's always nice to see my neighbors. Olympia, Olympia just celebrated their semi-annual Spring Arts Walk event. We were completely blessed with a glorious weekend, and we had amazing celebrations and just a wide range of artists out for our community to enjoy, marvel, and be inspired by. That event has been happening for decades, and I just want to be sure, as a local artist, to thank you for your continued support of the semi-annual Arts Walk events, April and October. I am the president of the South Sound Studio Tour. So, and I live in the Northeast Neighborhood, and I have a studio that's situated behind my house. And I just wanted to come down tonight and let you know that we are having another wonderful artistic event on May 17 and 18, from 11 to 4 p.m. That's going to be Saturday and Sunday. The South Sound Studio Tour is opening up 39 different studios with a total of 80 guest artists who will be showing with them. It, the tour offers our community the opportunity to enter workspaces where we make our work, while educating and inspiring our community. Arts Walk shares a wealth of the talented makers we have in our communities. The Studio Tour, oops, offers ways to build relationships with our artists in our communities. Please, please join us this year, and we'd love to have you come and meet some of the artists who are on the tour. I have
Thank you.
brochures.
Yeah, and it looks like Councilmember Cooper is coming down to pick up those brochures.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for all you do for the arts.
All right, next, we have Larry Jezza, followed by Morgan Montes.
My name is Larry Jezza, and I serve as the president of the Nottingham Community Association, as well as chair of the Council of Neighborhood Associations. That's the NCA and the CNA. I want to express my thanks for the support you've provided to Olympia's neighborhoods through the Neighborhood Matching Grant Program. This program has been instrumental in making our neighborhoods safer, more vibrant, and because we work together, improving our social and civic infrastructure. By bringing neighbors together, the program fosters social connectedness, a valuable step toward addressing challenges like social isolation and polarization. Through efforts such as cleaning up shared spaces, cultivating gardens and food sources, enhancing pathways, turning ISOs into assets, and celebrating our achievements as a community, these grants have demonstrated their value. Despite being a relatively small program, it consistently delivers outsized impacts. For every dollar of city funds, the community contributes two. Additionally, I want to extend my thanks for funding our outreach initiative aimed at engaging more residents, especially renters. Investments in postage, signage, communications, and website development are helping us to reach deeper into our neighborhoods, helping to make everyone feel included in our shared vision for Olympia. Thank you for your commitment to our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Morgan Montes?
Buenos dias, Mayor Payne and councilmembers. I am Morgan, and I'm here on behalf of the South Capitol Neighborhood Association to express our sincere gratitude for the city's continued support of the Neighborhood Matching Grants. Thanks to these matching grants, we are able to strengthen the bonds and increase civic engagement in our neighborhood through two annual events. One, our annual membership, and the other, an end-of-summer picnic. These events really enable us to share resources and information, like fire prevention. We also had DES come and share information about future plans for restoring Capitol Lake, so our neighborhood was informed at our barbecue. With the funds, we were able to provide the main dish, and neighborhood residents provided side dishes and desserts, so really coming together for a true community meal. And we hope to continue this tradition. This is really important, because if we want to take on the hard stuff, we really have to first build trusting relationships, and engagements like this really enable us to do that. So thank you. Your investment in this program has made a tangible difference. We now have 16 board members with renters included on our board, which is really important to us. With the two mailers that we do that go out to our 600 households, we now have 140 people on our mailing list, really enabling us to disperse important information in a timely manner. And we really want to thank you for believing in this model and your continued empowerment of the recognized neighborhood associations, so that longtime members, renters, and business owners can continue in this collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. The in-person public commenters, we've started offering a phonetic spelling on the signup sheet, and sometimes people overlook it, but it is really important to us that we pronounce your name correctly. And so thank you all for filling it out. And you'll have a master class with some humor in filling out phonetic spelling, and I appreciate that so much. Well, now move to virtual public comment, where we've heard from a couple of the folks in person, so we'll go ahead and move to Melissa Allen, and we'll wait for her to be brought over. Hello, Melissa. The timer will start when you're ready, and we can see you. And I think that, I'm not sure if we have sound. Melissa, could you try saying something? Oh, okay. Looks like we're, no, looks like we're muted. Hello, Melissa Allen. I believe you can hear us now. Will you just humor us and do a little sound check with us, if you could try saying something?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, beautiful. Okay, well, your time will begin once, once you do, and you'll see the timer on your end.
Oh, okay. I was just texting that I couldn't get on. Yeah, real quick, I just, it's a simple thing. I just am representing the Bigelow Highlands Neighborhood Association and wanted to thank the council and city staff for continuing the Neighborhood Matching Grant Program. We have used it for small amounts over the years for lots of different things. And the reason it's so important to us is we have no fundraising ability. We have like what we call voluntary dues, which results in maybe 300 a year if we're lucky. So we have been, for the last few years, using the money for a neighborhood-wide picnic at Bigelow Park.
No apologies necessary. Thank you so much. So, we have in-person public comment and virtual public comment, and we have concluded public comment for the night. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Looks like there was something going on with the timer there, but thank you, Melissa, for your brevity, because we didn't have to worry about the clock. But let's make sure it works next time. Thanks. Okay. So, that concludes public comment for tonight, so we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar. But before we do, are there any additional requests for pulls? Mayor Protam, win.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 4D.
Okay. Mayor Protam requests to pull 4D, which is the approval of the 2025 Advisory Committee Work Plans. Any additional requests for comments or pulls? All right. Seeing none. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to this one briefly. This is, well, like you said, approval of the 2025 Advisory Committee Work Plans. This is the majority of the council's different advisory bodies. And as anyone that has our agenda tonight can see, that we're being advised in many different areas in the city, and I think that almost every community member has some interest somewhere. And so, it is really great to see that community members that volunteer are ready to get to work on important issues that impact our city and are just ready to study them and inform us. But also, it's an opportunity to attend one of these meetings if it lies within an interest or concern area for you. All of these meetings are public for the advisory bodies, and as well, there is opportunities to public comment. And another something that I heard from the members of these advisory bodies is they really enjoy it when people show up and engage in the process, and they also, hint to council colleagues, love it when council members stop by as well. And so, as much as we can make time for that in 2025, I would encourage us to do so. And then, I always have to give in my plug that every November through January of the following year is an opportunity to apply to serve on one of our many advisory bodies. So, thank you, appreciate, and look forward to the work to come.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protam, win. All right. Seeing none, I need a motion to adopt this evening's consent calendar as published.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So, that takes us to our only business item for this evening, item 6A on your agenda, which is the approval of the 2025 Neighborhood Matching Grant Allocation. And we have Brittany Gilia presenting this evening on this item, who is an associate planner with Community Planning and Development. Welcome, Brittany.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to the city council and all of the neighborhoods that showed up. Thank you very much. So, for the record, my name is Brittany Gilia. I am an associate planner with CPED, and I am here before you today to present the 2025 Neighborhood Matching Grant Award Allocation Recommendations. So, to start the presentation, I wanted to show you the grant recipients for projects that were completed in 2024 using Neighborhood Matching Grant Funds. So, there were a variety of project categories, ranging from block parties to graffiti abatement, landscaping and site cleanups, neighborhood outreach, and more. There was around $28,000 approved to go toward these projects, and the neighborhoods got very, very close to spending all of those funds, which is awesome. It shows a great success rate for the grant projects. And this grant is reimbursement-based, and it does require a 50% match from each RNA or registered neighborhood association, and that could be matched with volunteer time or cash or material donations. So, with this $28,000 utilized, in combination with the 1,400 hours of sweat equity or volunteer time from neighborhoods, we were able to leverage $89,000 of value to the city to promote environmental stewardship, neighborhood beautification, and community connections. On this next slide, I wanted to give you a visual of where our current neighborhood associations are. Right now, there are 30 active neighborhood associations spread across the city and even a few in the urban growth areas. Communities have been very engaged with the program and have really great feedback that is going to be incorporated in future years of programming. I also wanted to bring up that there have been some requests this year from multiple groups regarding extending the project's funding window so that we can allow a year-round spending towards projects. These interests were brought forward by interest in planting some native plant projects, planting in the spring, aligning with community partner schedules. So, at this time, staff has looked into these comments and found that shifting the grant timeline would not be feasible at this time due to a few different factors: city budget, staff capacity, general logistics with our grant review software. But we did do some research to recommend alternatives that could work in the short term, so recommending folks to do planting projects in the fall, which could yield similar success rates to planting in spring. Additionally, it could be an option for an applicant to request a grant extension to push their spending window into the first quarter of the following year, so that funds could be available in quarter one. And I also wanted to make a note here that we did receive interest from neighborhoods in the possibility of exploring rain gardens or bioswales as fundable projects for this program. It sparked some great cross-departmental conversations between CPED and Public Works. And although we did not receive an application for a rain garden or bioswale in this cycle, because there were a few technical or design information that was needed to make sure that the project could be successful, it was still a great conversation to have amongst departments. And thank you to Water Resources for the collaboration. This next slide here is going to be a visual to show you which neighborhood associations have applied for funding. There were 11 applications in review, and these projects were ranging from community events or block parties, park cleanups, site maintenance, food resilience projects, continuing work on pedestrian pathways, and more. So, it was a competitive grant cycle this year, and the Grant Review Panel is recommending a combination of full and partial funding for 10 of these applications. And so, again, as mentioned, this is a reimbursement-based matching grant. In 2025, we've got an approved budget for $33,000, and the recommended awards plus an administrative fee would bring us to $33,033, and that would be used to leverage almost $105,000 of value for the city. The image on this slide is a great example of utilizing the Neighborhood Matching Grant Funds. This is Fall Fest by the Eastside Neighborhood Association. They're pressing apples, and the signage that you see, it's also a reusable banner, so they can change out the event as they're reusing the materials. Here we have a list of the projects that are being recommended for funding by the Grant Review Panel. The total recommended awards are $32,480, plus an administrative fee of $553 to use Submittable, which is our online grant platform. Please note the top two listings. I believe this is a little leisure...there we go. Top two listings here are first-time applicants to the program, which is also great, seeing that there's new neighborhoods getting engaged and having projects to work on. In closing, I wanted to pass along and continue the thanks from neighborhoods. A lot of folks are very grateful to be able to access these funds, and it's been very nice to work with community members to see these projects closing out for 2024 and being recommended for 2025. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Brittany. It's my understanding that it's your first time presenting to us tonight, so job well done.
Thank you.
Flawless. So, thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
I wonder if Councilmember Vanderpool might want to speak first as a part of the review committee?
Sure.
Yeah, it's my first year doing a review committee, a first year for a lot of people that were involved in it. And so, you know, I have to say that it's interesting, because I've also been told that this is the first time in a long while that, in least recent memory, that there were more requests than there was funds available, which is pretty interesting. I have a few questions actually thinking about that, is I'm wondering, why is it $33,000, right? Why is it higher? Why is it lower? What do we set it based on? I didn't ask that before. I'm very curious.
If Jay knows.
So, that would be actually maybe a great question. First, Susan, our new director.
More Jay.
Or Jay, Bernie, city manager.
Someone's got it. Someone in the building knows.
This is based on budget process. I do know that it was increased in 2024, an additional $10,000, but I'll differ for more context.
No, Brittany, that's really good. So, you know, we've started over the years with a lower number, and I think every year the requests continue to come in, and we've noticed more requests, and we've had money. So, council made a decision in its budget process to increase the budget by $10,000, and now here we are, and again, we've got more applications and funding available. So, the shorter answer is I don't know if there's a real rhyme or reason behind the exact amount. I think we've tried to set it in a place that relies on grants and trying to get, excuse me, grant matches and getting good grant value for the money. But certainly, as we move forward in the other budget cycles, that's a conversation we can revisit.
Cool. Thank you. And then, you know, part of the other part of this is like, we can't fund everything this year, right? And there was a few asks that we didn't get to, and I'm wondering, and I really care about the relationship with our neighborhood associations, I really do. I'm very curious, you know, as we think about next year, as we think about where we are, I'm wondering, what other ways can we get to yes with some of these, right? And I kept thinking about that as we're going through the process, because there were...full disclosure, there were some concerns about private property usage of public funds and some issues that was brought to us. And so, I'm very curious about, in the future, about what we can do with what, you know...we've thought about the idea of plazas, for example, in our Parks Department, and other things that we can do where a piece of property is in the public domain but can be used by the neighborhood association that isn't a traditional park but meets those legal needs so that we don't get a legal question about the usage of this. I believe that to be true. And so, unfortunately, some of it, we weren't able to fund because of that legal question, right? But I would love us to get to the yes on this in the future, right? Because I love a lot of these applications, and I love what came to us. And so, there's those limitations, and if anyone has any questions about that after, we can chat a little briefly. But that's part of the reason why for public comment, why we're unable to, is the use of public funds on private property is tricky. But anyway, I think that I love the variety of investments in our community. I love where a lot of these came from this year, and I can't wait to do more with it. Honestly, if we added a lot more money, we'd do a huge amount more stuff. So, that's a question we must ask ourselves when we look at the budget in the future. And get to the yes, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool, and thank you for your willingness to serve in that capacity. It is, you know, it's not tough, because you want to do it all. I remember being in that role and looking at all the things that were requested of us in those applications. And so, yeah, let's take a look at it when it comes time to look at the budget. Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Brittany, I'm hoping to understand a little bit more about the ONA request. Councilmember Vanderpool talked about the issue of the story flags going on a lot across the street. Is the art workshops, as I understand, are a continuing, you know, a multiple-cycle effort? So, I'm wondering, was there a specific concern about the art workshops also?
So, based on discussions with the review panel and some staff review, the school art workshops, they were valued, or the request was for $3,250. And with the submitted materials, it did not demonstrate a strong alignment with the grant priorities. This year, it was very competitive, and so, we went strictly based off of what was submitted through the application period. We have reached out, though, and the applicant has been advised that potentially the installation of the school art workshop results could be a direct alignment with grant priorities in future years. But with what was submitted, it did not appear to meet grant priorities as much as other projects did.
Good. And I'm going to want to continue that conversation with the community, and I also spoke with some of our arts parks and recreation folks who thought they might have some ideas about that. And then, the other thing I wanted to flag was, this isn't the first time that we've had a multi-year request, and our program is really aimed at projects that can be done in a few months of the year. But the reality has been herding the cats and then organizing the event for the cats often spills beyond the grant cycle time. With the Love Our Local Festival, we had this discussion a couple of times and opted to make a longer-term commitment. So, I would flag for next year's consideration on that question of timeline, also whether there's a way to accommodate a project that's a longer-than-12-month project or that is anticipated to reoccur. So, and thank you for your work in leading this process and in presenting to us tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. And I've been taking notes, all of these considerations. As the first year working on this program, it's been very interesting and awesome to see the different ways that next year we can incorporate everyone's feedback to get the program continuing smoothly.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you for bringing this forward. I'm always excited by this every year. It gets better. And I'm also always just kind of distraught by the amount of dollars that we're putting into this program, given the size of our budget. You know, and as I'm thinking, I'd like to be able to have that be a more ready answer in the future. And so, what if we just tried in this budget to move it to per capita, like we have the arts? So, $1 for every human that lives in the city of Olympia. Just try that as a model and see if we can make it work, just as a suggestion. I also really think that the rain garden and bioswale idea is awesome, and that could be grant money that comes out of the stormwater utility or water resources. And so, can we look at whether we can bring any utility funds to actually promote reducing stormwater in neighborhoods? I mean, I could see a whole add-on of the matching grant program or a separate program for stormwater reduction in the neighborhood. So, this is really exciting stuff. One, just kind of, maybe this is a hard question for you, maybe it's not. It is for me, there's a lot of this city that's not organized. And so, how would a group of neighbors in a non-recognized neighborhood association or non-recognized area, not in a recognized neighborhood association, be able to access these funds equitably?
I think I might have partial of a question, but also, I've been asking a similar question to myself. So, I pulled the map back up so you can see where the active RNAs are. There are some areas where there are larger areas. I believe those might be more established, and there's a lot of smaller RNAs towards the edges. So, I think my goal for next year would be more outreach to let folks know that these funds exist and to make sure that we can reach the areas that are kind of with some gaps in membership, but just outreach to let folks know what exists, so that folks can choose to participate if they're able to. And I definitely want to make sure that we have the ability to offer the program equitably across the city in future years, too.
So, how would you access the program if there was no recognized neighborhood association? You partner with one?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Ooh, that is a great question. I'm sure partnerships would be available depending on where you were, but I don't think that's come up, and I think if someone were to...
would be more outreach to let folks know that these funds exist and to make sure that we can reach the areas that are kind of with some gaps in membership, but just outreach to let folks know what exists so that folks can choose to participate if they're able to. And I definitely want to make sure that we have the ability to offer the program equitably across the city in future years, too.
So how would you access the program if there was no recognized neighborhood association? You partner with one?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Ooh, that is a great question. I'm sure partnerships would be available depending on where you were, but I don't think that's come up. And I think if someone were to come to me today to say, we're not in a registered neighborhood association, I would help them get signed up and prepare for next year. But signups are also very simple. It's an annual registration. This is something that you would get your neighborhood boundaries, a list of the different folks who would be on the board, and also some bylaws that are, you know, fairly simple. And then that's all it takes to register. So it's pretty, pretty easy.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that answer. I think there's reasons why some neighborhoods have organization and some don't. And I'd love to see a process that's more equitable for people that don't have to go through that organization process. But I could see one or the other being an incentive for bringing people together in an organization coming in, in, in the future. So I love that you're thinking hard about it. And that's, that's the question I would continue to ask in this program. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any additional comments? City Manager Bernie.
Well, I just want to say I love the conversation of the council right now. I love the conversation about how do we, sorry, Mark Russell, as I look down the line about utility funds. I think getting creative is a way to figure out how we can provide more funding for projects through the neighborhood matching grants. The other thing that comes to mind is making sure we're not missing opportunities to link people to Inspire Olympia Funds as well because there's some overlap with some of these projects potentially in that funding. So I think looking at all those funding sources and making sure that we're communicating them, not just one by one, but as a whole, to our neighborhood associations, make sure everybody knows where all the opportunities are for funding to help advance projects in their neighborhoods. So that's something we can talk more about.
Councilmember Gilman.
I would like to make a, a motion, and I'm also, as I begin the motion, I wanted to clarify that the policy that describes this program says that it helps Olympia's recognized neighborhood associations fund community-driven projects that the Olympia City Council will make available grant funds to recognize neighborhood associations up to a 50/50 matching basis. So that's, that's how this particular program was, was created. And we could either have an augment or modify it, but that's, I think that's the answer to the, the question of if somebody wasn't. So I, I would move to approve the recommended neighborhood matching grant proposals and authorize the completion of contracts for the proposals.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Brittany. And we look forward to having you back. Congratulations on your initiation into the council presenter fold.
Thank you very much.
All right. So that concludes our business items for tonight. So at this time, the council will recess for five minutes. And, oh, excuse me, I'm skipping reports. I'm moving very quickly. Can you tell that I'm like, uh huh, yeah. So, excuse me, I will start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
Did you not have a mayor's report?
I do not.
Okay.
Councilmember Madron.
Um, the land use and environment committee met on April 24th. We talked about sidewalks. We, the assessment of the state of all of our sidewalks in the city is complete. And so we had a presentation on what they found. So, you know, someone walked 226 miles of sidewalks around the city and found over 28,000 issues with our sidewalks, you know, in, with a range of severity. But 95% of those issues had to do with either panel uplift, where you have one panel that is raised and, you know, to different degrees of severity. And, and the other part of that 95% issues had to do with cracking or spalling, which can cause all sorts of tripping hazards. And just looking out towards like, you know, what it would cost to repair the 2,452 severe panel replacements that are needed, you know, we're looking at 36 to 76 million dollars, depending on how we'd like to do it. That lower number would be if we were to create a city crew that did that in-house, which , which, you know, staff showed us that it would be much more efficient and less expensive to do it that way. And then we talked about a range of policy options of how we can get at the sidewalk issue. And this will come back to land use in 2026 for us to evaluate some options. You know, currently, the city does, we do take care of sidewalk issues in some of the high pedestrian areas. Anywhere where we take care of street trees, we take care of sidewalks, like downtown, the high-density quarters, things like that. But in the neighborhoods, it is the, it is the responsibility of the property owner. And when a complaint comes in, we do send a notice about it, but we don't use code enforcement for it at this point. There are other models out there ranging, and there's a range, you know, from like, it's the property owner's responsibility to the city takes care of everything. But we've asked, staff have shared some thoughts in terms of different policy directions this could go, where, you know, upon sale of the property, the sidewalk needs to be repaired. Deferred assessment, so like, you know, you can have, have the, do, do the sidewalk repair upfront, but then pay for it when you sell your home. There are some areas that collect annual fees. Local improvement districts are an option. We also talked about options for cost share, where we can figure out a dedicated source of fund and share the costs with property owners. So more work to come on this. Like I said, it'll come back to land use in 2026. But there will be a story map coming out in August so people can look and see what we've learned about the state of our sidewalks across the city. We also approved the, the areas of the EDs, the engineering design and development standards that we would like staff to bring us some updates on for us to vote on. Some of the high, high-level areas there are addressing undergrounding overhead power. It's a big, as, as you know, Councilmember Gilman, a big barrier to redevelopment. There are some things pertaining to middle housing code amendments such, especially if you want to split a lot, but they're both on the same meter. We talked about local access street standards and had a good conversation about how we maybe don't need as wide of a road as, you know, as it's sometimes perceived for certain city services. We talked about pervious concrete sidewalks, street trees that don't ruin sidewalks, and also water service connections. So more to come on that. We just approved the high-level areas where we would like staff to bring us something to dig into. And then we also had a pre-discussion on the land use element for the comprehensive plan with a focus on neighborhood centers. We've had some robust conversations, both in the land use committee and as a council on that. And so staff wanted to come to us to dig in a little bit deeper before completing work on the land use element. So it'll come back to us. But what we talked about overall, you know, when it comes to neighborhood centers, is that we know some places, we have them designated, and, you know, there, it's been a challenge having those places come to fruition. And so we all had a study session on different ways that that could come about. And we're going to keep that body of work and bring those policies into our comprehensive plan. But we also talked about small-scale commercial throughout the city. And we had a good conversation around whether we do that based on a conditional use permit or whether we just set the regulations so it's more predictable. We kind of landed in a place of like, let's start with the conditional use permit approach because we can do that pretty quickly, but have a, a goal of addressing, you know, how we would like that to look, you know, across the city. And there was a bill at the legislature this year that actually would have made us do that anyway. So, you know, I'm sure we could get ahead of them on this one. We'll see how long it takes us. And then, you know, the other topic I wanted to bring up, usually I don't talk about my meetings before I go to them, but this Friday, the Thurston Regional Planning Council is going to be taking on action on a recommendation from the Transportation Policy Board to, to consider removing equity from our regional transportation plan. This was a, a vote that was taken at the last Transportation Policy Board meeting that was not on, not specifically on their agenda. They were voting on whether to replace, put the RTP out for public comment. And they did vote to do that, but also to recommend to the Thurston Regional Planning Council to direct staff to start taking equity and other, other language flagged in federal executive orders as, you know, words that are federally targeted. And so while the focus was on equity in that conversation, and of course, the concern around this is the loss of access to federal funding. So I'll just say that upfront. But other, other things, you know, all the, while the, their conversation really focused on equity, you know, there's other language that has been targeted by the federal government as it pertains to transportation. So we're talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. We're talking about environmental justice. We're talking about climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. We're talking about electric vehicles and EV infrastructure. We're talking about green infrastructure. We're talking about bicycle infrastructure. So, so this is a conversation that's going to come to TRPC on Friday. You know, I did ask staff, our staff, to kind of dig in and kind of figure out what those implications were for us, depending on the action taken. If TRPC does direct staff to remove equity from the RTP, then there is a project in our, in our regional transportation plan on environmental justice, an environmental justice and social equity study that would likely be impacted. Yeah, some of our goals and policies related to equity would be impacted. Other projects would probably remain if we're just limiting it to the, the word equity. But it's already getting outside of the values of our community by doing that. And I don't think that we would protect anything by forfeiting those values. And if those changes are more sweeping, if the direction is that we're going to remove any federally targeted language from our RTP, it could really impact us and our, we are required to be consistent with the RTP. A lot of our projects do have to do with green infrastructure, bicycle infrastructure, you know, and a lot of the regional data and target monitoring, such as vehicle miles traveled, would have to be pulled out of there. And that's how we, that's one of our climate indicators right there. And so, you know, the, the conversation here is around like, do we capitulate to the federal government in the hopes of trying to preserve some transportation funding? Or do we hold strong to our values? And just so you all know, my, my vote will be against all of that. You know, this, the RTP is going to last us to 2050, and our current federal administration has got less than four years. So this is a long-ranging plan, and I really believe in local planning. You know, our, our RTP has always been based on the values of our community. We've never taken direction from the federal government before, and I don't think that we should start now. And also, the recommendation from the Transportation Policy Board was to go ahead and release the RTP for public comment and also have staff working on removing the language at the same time. So the, the version that will be up for public comment won't even have these, these changes in there for, for people to see and review. So that is, all of these are a big concern. I've been in touch with our staff, TRPC staff, some of my colleagues on TRPC. And, you know, I'm not the only one who's concerned about it. So I'm sure we'll have a good conversation about it on Friday. But I did want to make you all aware of the, this recommendation that's come to us and the vote that'll take place on Friday. And I did want to invite Robert to, to just share, because he does serve on TPB. I know that this, it came, the, the vote on this was kind of a surprise. So I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to share.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to share some, some thoughts, but I'm going to save most of it for Friday. I get a second crack at this as the Interstate Transit Authority representative. But this is something that I've had a lot of thought on and a lot of frustration on. And I, I feel that if I, and I, I can't say for everyone else on the Transportation Policy Board, but if we had done this probably more properly with more time, and we would have actually had time to read it as if it was on a, a agenda and be able to read through it, I would have voted no. And I suspect some of my colleagues would have also voted no. So a lot of this is coming, was coming through to us in a way that seemed matter-of-fact that was not matter-of-fact or ran through by staff. And so for me, I'm lucky to be able to vote on this twice and hopefully have it not passed. Because to me, I feel that this, as council member, as my colleague over here has said very perfectly well that this is, does not represent our community's values, these changes. It puts us in a position where we will, we would, you know, potentially lose projects, put us in a position where we would be backing out of our values on, on climate and equity work in our community. And so I am glad that I'm able to vote on this the second time. And I will have a much more detailed, thought-out speech at that. And I've spoken with the chair about this. So.
And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to thank Councilmember Madron for carrying this and carrying our values at TRPC. It's really weird. And I think the values of the community are represented in the transportation plan in the out years and the back years because this thing is always that long, right? And so it's been developed over time with our community. And the thing I said to the mayor of the neighboring city that brought it forward is, even though the president likes to say Joe Biden in every sentence, Joe Biden did not make us write those words in our plans. Those came from our community. Those are our words, and we want them in our plan. So thank you for carrying that to TRPC, and I hope you're successful.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Yeah. Thank you for your thorough report, Councilmember Madron. I am most interested in the last part. I also, I'm, I'm glad that you're sharing this at reports. I've heard, heard some buzz in the community about this coming and, and was really upset about it. And just really appreciate really both of your leadership, Councilmember Madron and Councilmember Vanderpool, even though I hear, I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Vanderpool, of sometimes things happen and, and then we have another opportunity to think about it. And we don't always have another opportunity. So I'm, I'm glad for you realizing that. Yeah, I just really appreciate the leadership on this one, Councilmember Madron. It's clear that not only are you, are you doing your homework about something, something coming before the meeting, but also digging deeper into it as well and trying to make sure that, you know, the process was followed. And I'd be interested to hear from other council colleagues if they care to comment. But for myself, I'm, I don't need to reiterate. I'm, I'm totally in line with what I'm hearing. It's really more than unfortunate. In fact, it almost seems like a nightmare is happening some days. Yeah, the, these, the issues, the, the topics that you had listed off about being targeted federally are, they're issues that have always been here. They've, they've really always been here. Not so much the environmental impacts ones, because humans have created lots of environmental impacts. Although, yeah, I'm not interested in calling it something else or veiling it and pretending as if it's not here, because that is what we intend to, to move towards in all areas. So, so thank you for, thank you for the strong leadership from you both. And curious about what support looks like, whether it's that Friday meeting or, or beyond. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions for Councilmember Madron? I also want to express my gratitude to you for what you're going to do, but also for the fact that, you know, I'm willing to admit that I did not realize the extent of the implications of removing this language until I just listened to everything that you just said, which makes it even more of a big deal that this is actually a proposal that's been brought forward. Councilmember Vanderpool, I appreciate your willingness to be vulnerable in this moment. And, and obviously, you're taking this as, as a moment of growth for yourself as an elected official, and I can clearly see that. And so, thank you. I, I think that cowering to the federal government at this point makes no sense, specifically because of the fact that by the very fact that we're talking about it right now, we're actually creating news. actually creating news. So you can just Google Thurston County equity, and it will probably come up. So instead of just sticking to our values in the first place like we should have done, I think that it makes zero sense that now we're having this conversation in a, in a public space, so we're actually making ourselves more of a target if this is the logic behind this, this sort of decision. And so that's my two cents on that, and I look forward to seeing the outcome. All right. So, Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Executive just met the other day, and actually just not to stale, stay on the subject, but Councilmember Cox from Lacey asked if we would like to do a letter as members of that Climate Collaborative regarding our concerns with the language. And we all agreed, so I'm gonna be on that. Probably tomorrow, I'm reading over it and probably signing on to that. We also had our officer elections for that, that committee assignment. So Tom Water is leading at this time, and then Thurston County is, is vice chair. And so that, the whole time it's been Olympia, but, you know, people are, I, I'm not the senior member on here, and so I figured that would be good to have our neighboring cities not just leading the collab. I would love to see our neighboring cities also be involved more and more, especially as we work through these long-term goals through the collaborative. Home Energy Score, we had a brief conversation about that. It's on delay. I have more information on that if anyone wants a little more detail, but it's a little in delay in Lacey because of their comp plan work, they're working on their climate chapter just as we are. Tom Water is stuck in a, in a legal question on a pause as if, to, to, just to see what is the enforcement factor in it. And the county is, is needing to schedule their part. So we're all kind of at different speeds when it comes to the Homeland Energy Score. And so I, I, I said, well, I can't do anything from my jurisdiction, but if anyone needs any help, let's, like, help us get there. So with the, we all need to kind of get on, get on it so that we can all, so it would be more effective and more cost effective for the region. Then we got an Energize Thurston presentation, there's progress being made. Apps will be open on May, apps are open through May 31st, and then installations will be conducted for sites, assessments through June. This is the program that was originally Olympia, Energize Olympia, but now it's Thurston County. It's, the program has expanded at the end of last year, and we're at a good place. There's a lot of people out there that have been asking to do the heat pumps and the heat pump program, and we have tons, we have more applications than, than we have ever had, and that's good to help summer climate work regarding energy usage with homes and construction. So, but we also had to delay our regional initiative for 2025 to 2026. This is due to some issues with comp plan delays, it is time, funding, staff hour constraints. We went through the, the call, went and looked at it, and we had some of our community represent, community members look through it, and they, they understood why we're doing this. It's mostly to make sure that we're all, we all get our comp plan climate chapters done and that we all meet those goals. The hardest thing is the limitations on this is, you know, you only have so many staff hours and so much availability. We want to make sure we all have very strong climate chapters in our comprehensive plans to the region. And so, and then the other, the other meeting is the Olympia School District Safe Routes. We just met yesterday. Time is a weird thing for me right now. This is, it has to do with the Olympia School District Safety Levy Funding. This is kind of a collaboration between us and them and what we can do around our, things we finally hit a point where we've come to an agreement. This is going to, we're going to remark all the existing crosswalks surrounding our schools within a half mile radius. This will, this is aimed to, can be completed by the summer of 2026. And then we have one large project, which will be on the east side and a west side improvement. This will have to do with corridor safety improvements along a few of our, between, first one is over near Hanson and Marshall, and, and the other one is by Reeves and Roosevelt. These need to be scoped. This includes signs, markings, linear speed feedback signage to reduce vehicle speeds, potential improvement crosswalks, other possible features and ball bouts and so on and so forth. This to help slow speeds around the schools. This will be scoped out the summer, ends of fall, and then added into the CFP for Olympia in construction in 26, 27. We'll be contributing some of our funds for the safety corridor because these are marked on our plans, but this is, this is a good opportunity for us and school district to jointly pay for some of this stuff, some of the stuff that we are planning on doing. Yeah, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Seeing none. Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. First, I, well, I've, I've got, I want to report on the Nuclear Abolition Conference I went to, but I, first, you deferred your, your report, and I, I want to make sure that somebody's going to shout out Arts Walk and the Procession, and that both the mayor and I had visits to the Procession Studio in the last days of the artwork. And in, in the armory, we had, they had a limit by safety regulations, but 50 community members at a time were in there creating costumes and floats and lamps over a period of a couple of months. It was an enormous community involvement and effort. And this year's luminary procession rivaled the procession of the species. I understood there were over 90 people just within Samba Oliva signed up to participate on Friday evening. So I, I just want to recognize that it was not only a beautiful success and beautiful weather, as Kathy said earlier, but that it's grown substantially in, in the number of people participating and, and the beauty of the event. So that, that was glorious. It was glorious. And what I wanted to present on this evening is I represented the city on April 11th and 12th at a, a conference on the prevention of nuclear war. We were asked to come and speak to the resolutions that have been made over the years from the city of Olympia. And it was sobering. We don't stop very often and think about the threat of nuclear war, and we don't have kids going into the basement of a grade school to, you know, to practice hiding from the fallout. So just a couple of, of sort of reality checks. The first one is that there are currently 15,000 nuclear weapons in the world, 2,000 that are kept at the hair's trigger, ready to launch within minutes, and that, yes, 90% of those are held by the United States and Russia, and the largest single concentration of nuclear warheads on planet Earth is here in Pigeon Sound. It's primarily Bangor, the Trident Nuclear Submarine Base, but we are the first target for the rest of the world, which is pretty sobering. The other reality, couple of realities I heard, the, the weapons that are prepared to deploy now are all substantially larger than the two weapons that were deployed on humans at, at the end of World War II, the Hiroshima and Nagasaki bombs, which means that there's, there's, there's no longer really discussion of a survivable or a limited nuclear war. There's anticipation that it would create climate disruption on par with the Ice Age. And, and so, so, so there we are, that they're still there, but luckily, we still have 18-year-old soldiers guarding them and holding the codes. So, yes, so, one, I, I was lucky enough to, to facilitate a panel with some global leaders in this work, including Dr. Ira Hefling, who's a Nobel Prize winner and was one of the founders of Physicians for Social Responsibility. And an effort that he's working on now is called Back From the Brink. And I, I passed brochures along to you that he had offered. If, if there are a couple of other council members who are interested in pursuing a referral to consider this, he would be willing to zoom in with us and, and talk about it. But the, the, the four, or rather, five planks of the Back From the Brink are to urge the federal government to actively pursue a verifiable agreement among nuclear armed states to eliminate their nuclear arsenals. Second, to renounce the option of first strike, of using nuclear weapons first. Third, to end the US president's sole unchecked authority to launch a nuclear strike. Fourth, to take US nuclear weapons off of hair trigger alert and, and just put more steps to make it more deliberate, a more cautious process to prepare to launch a weapon. And then the fifth one was something I was not aware of until this conference, and that's that there's an active project to update our nuclear arsenal, to replace the entire arsenal, which is in the trillion dollar kinds of expense, and it would mean both updating silos across the Midwest and updating all of our warheads. So, so that's, that's huge. So that's, anyhow, it was, it was a sobering, sobering event, and I, I think it's, it's, it's also pretty important to recognize that while the, our, our, our collective attention that we put to this issue has sort of faded over the years, the, the reality that we're relying on accidents to not happen and miscommunications to not happen to protect the planet is, is worthy of our attention. And, and so, wanted to offer that, and feel free to, to reach out, and we can, we can talk some more. Great, I appreciate. Councilmember Cooper says he'll, he'll engage in that conversation, so. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman, and thank you for representing us and attending that event. I have some questions, but first I just want to see if anyone else has any questions. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I was looking at the back of this brochure, and I was like, oh, surely Olympia's on here somewhere, but we're not. And actually, there's not a single city in Washington that is on here. Meanwhile, the entire state of Oregon and California are both on here, so, you know, happy to help support in any, any way you need.
I, I understand at this point, there are about, I think it's like 87 cities and seven state legislatures who have signed this particular, and we have, we have made similar resolutions in the past, but on this particular initiative, you're right, Seattle is currently studying the issue, but there's not anybody in Washington State who's signed on.
I, I do have some questions. I mean, I know that we do a proclamation every year recognizing that nuclear weapons should be abolished. I just have questions, and, and I admit, I don't know much about this, but it sort of feels like to me it's, it's putting a lot on the US. Granted, we are one of the, the most heavily militarized countries in the world, but I, I'm struggling with understanding, you know, like, is it sort of like a United States, you go first without your nuclear weapons when we know that other nations who are our enemies also have them? So I'm not quite sure why we would give ours up first. So it's just a question of national security that I'm not understanding, like, how exactly would that work? Because from a security standpoint, it doesn't make much sense to me. So that's what's percolating up here right now for me.
And I'm, I'm not an expert, but I, I will say that there was a lot of presentation and, and information about that particular topic. And one thing that's striking in the treaties that we, well, we haven't done it annually, we've done several in the last decade, is that many of those treaties were signed by the other, we've been the, we've been the holdout on a number of these. So it's, it's not so much us going first, I think, as our joining the global community, which is a, a, a perspective shift that, that's being discussed a lot right now. But I, I think that you could, you could look at that question from both ways. Do we want to join the global community in a mutually verifiable de-escalation? Or do we, do we have some sort of particular interests or aspirations that we need to have the dominant force in order to maintain our position? So it's, it's not easily settled, but that's, that's the kind of presentation they had.
Okay, that, that makes a lot more sense. Councilmember Vanderpool, did you have something to add?
So, you know, the, last year, I read a book called Nuclear War Scenario. It's a very good book, very, and, and the thing about nuclear war that I wasn't aware of, because this is a highly researched book, is that, for example, hair trigger alert. Hair trigger alert is even if a rogue state attacked us, we fire everything. That's, that's the reality of the way our military system is set up with nuclear weapons. If a rogue state attacked the United States, we, everything, there would, there's no win scenario. And that's kind of the scary thing about nuclear war, and the scary thing, and this seems very reasonable to me because this isn't asking us to demilitarize, it's to reconsider how we respond, right? So like, giving the sole unchecked authority to the President of the United States is, you know, it should be, if it's something that could potentially end the world, it should be more than the President of the United States making that decision. You know, there, the, it, this, and, and to me, and, and again, there's no, it's a no-win scenario, and, and if something happens, it's just gone, you know? And I think that this is very, a very reasonable thing to ask for us to, to look at.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that helps clarify a lot of my questions. I didn't realize we were going to answer them in real time, but why not? I asked in real time.
Mayor Payne, may I just, one other brief part of the conversation was that the United States has the largest conventional military and most non-nuclear weaponry on the planet. And so some would argue that if it were for strategic purposes, that we have, we, we, we have enough military power to, to not use nuclear weapons and accomplish any sort of objective we might have. So that's, that's, that's another thread in this conversation, is whether there are other technologies that have emerged and other ways to intervene in economies and food system, if, if there are other ways to wage war that are not nuclear war that would be equally impactful in, in trying to gain some sort of objective. So anyhow, just for what that's worth, and I, I appreciate the time this evening.
I appreciate the clarity. Thank you. Mayor Protem Nguyen.
No reports, but I do hope to see everyone, or everyone that can make it, at the Peacekeeping, our Peacemakers event. It's called the Celebration of Peacemakers. It's on May 4th. It's a, put on by the Dispute Resolution Center of Thurston County, and we're going to be having the mayor speak. And I'm, I'm sort of in a love affair with this, with this organization. I think we need it now more than ever, so more peacemaking.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mayor Protem Nguyen? Seeing none. Councilmember Green.
I have no report.
Councilmember Cooper.
Trying to do my report. Councilmember Gilman took me back to my military training because I was a Nuclear Biological and Chemical Operations Specialist. So I learned everything about what nukes can do to us, short and long term, and I'm 100% on, on board with this, so glad that we're talking about it. A couple of things from me, so I, last week I forgot to report, or maybe it was late, on the opioid, opioid debatement council, we met in April. We took a couple of actions, and so we've voted and decided to pool as a body, pool our funds, and so that will require some modifications to the inter-local agreement. So the lawyers will have a little bit of work to do to get us to a point where we can do some grant making. Right now, the funds are swirling around the country and going into accounts in kind of a, a rapid-fire pace, and so all of the jurisdictions are working to get a handle on how much funding we have at the moment and how much funding will, will be in the, in the pot as we move along. will, will be in the, in the pot as we move along. But we were really encouraged because we have this really extensive list of allowable uses for the opioid funds from the settlement. But in parallel, the county opioid, council opioid task force has been working on a plan. And so they've gone out into the community and asked and listened and looked at the data and all of the research, and come up with a plan for our county. And, and, and within that plan is baked in quite a bit of public feedback, which is required by the, the, the settlement. And so we're in a good place timing-wise to be able to use the county's pre-existing public feedback to inform the grant-making for the, for the settlement. And there's 100% overlap between what the community told us and the priority, key, the high priority areas that came from the settlement, which I'll just read because they're interesting, are naloxone or other FDA-approved drugs to reverse opioid overdoses, a medication-assisted treatment distribution, and other opioid-related treatment, which is kind of a really interesting one, because we learned at the meeting that Medic One is actually putting in a field pilot to do opioid-assisted treatment in the field with paramedics, and it's unfunded, and it will be a really great project to look at possibly funding with this, with this. Pregnant and postpartum care, expanding treatment for neonatal abstinence syndrome, and expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery services, treatment for the incarcerated population, prevention, expanding syringe services, and evidence-based data collection and research are all the priority uses. And then there's like, something like 20 pages of allowable uses behind that. So, but we were really excited that there was so much overlap, and so once we get done with the inter-local agreement, it should be pretty quick for us to move to a grant-making process later this year. I sent you a really great meeting recap that Michael Kaye gave me from the EDC, in particular because we had this awesome presentation from a, a company that's building a, a battery bank in South Thurston County near the trans Alta transmission lines. They'll be able to tap right into the, into the grid. They're building it in the middle of private forestry land that will be a small re-change of use for the forestry land, but this, like, I, I want to say it was like, well, no, I'm not going to remember, but it was a small acreage compared to how much forest track was around there. Will be able to power 50,000 homes. And so the, the idea is that the power would come online as the load increases, like when people come home from work or get up in the morning as the load increases, then that would be able to alleviate the power needs from far away, right here in our local Mike Reed, our former economic development director and I were sitting next to each other and just going like, we need this at the airport, we need one out on Port Peninsula. It, it's really, there's a lot of different models for how they're filling them, whether off the grid, or off of wind, or off of solar, and then storing the power for, for more of a neighborhood or town use. We gave them a really hard time because they're in Thurston County, and they called the project Centralia. It's about four miles from Bucota. And so we were, Thurston Economic Development Council and the South Puget Sound Community College president were like, why are you funding Centralia Community College and calling this project Centralia? Anyway, so we, we made it a little bit of a push. Also, I wanted to just report back that the Economic Development Board, Council Board is very excited about the prospect of having a new conference center in downtown Olympia. I tried to tell them about park development, and they stopped me and said, tell us about the deal with the Squawson tribe. So, but they're, they're excited about both of those things. And then lastly, one other thing that came up at that meeting, and I think the conversation is for another time, but I want to just flag a conversation around the Endangered Species Act and the interpretation, because there's people at the EDC board that say there might be a moment in time when you will only have to worry about harm to the species, not harm to the habitat. And I believe all of our code around critical areas just references the Federal Endangered Species Act. And so I'd like to make sure that it's written in our code that the, the, the development would be based on the whole habitat and not just referencing in the federal law being followed within our SEPA process and NEPA process. So I, I, that's probably an executive session conversation, but I want to flag it and make sure that we're on top of it. It's the first executive order I've heard that would change the way development happens significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I just wanted to note, like, our critical area stuff is embedded within the Growth Management Act, and there, there are specific types of critical areas that have to be protected. So that, we probably have an additional layer of protection in Washington, but I do want to look into the, the concern that you've raised.
Yeah, we do have some, some specifics in Washington there, but they're not, there're two layers, the NEPA and SEPA, and they, in my, my work doing critical areas consulting, we often just found that the, the, the local policy references the federal policy by, by, by CFR and doesn't recite it into the law.
Councilmember Vanderpoel.
My question was answered.
All right. Any additional questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Mayor Protem Nguyen.
You were reading off a list of services as it goes to your earlier one. What site was that? Was that?
I will forward you all the packet from our meeting, and there's the county opioid plan, the settlement document, the allowable uses document, and the current inter-local for, for our, for our council. I'll, I'll forward that to everyone right now, and you can have a look.
Okay. Yeah, that would be so great. That's really important work, of course, and so, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper, again, for, for your service on that. And yes, I would love to have that information.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I forgot one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I know I've been long. But in that interlocal, I just want to make sure staff are aware that we're gonna, we would like to recreate the RHC rule for county rubber stamping, if you will, of the recommendation. So any, any opioid abatement council recommendation, because we'll pool the funds at the county, will need to be approved by the county commissioners, and we want the words to match what's in the RHC agreement, that the county commissioners can only do an up or down vote, and then they have to kick it back to the opioid council rather than changing it, regardless of how they feel about contractors. Yes. Oh, sorry, I can't call on you. I'm sorry. That's his job.
City manager Bernie.
And I'm sure I'll find out from my city manager colleagues. I'm wondering if any of the cities raise their hand to say they'll start writing interlocal, or do we decide who's going to start drafting? Mark's taking notes over here, so I'll make, just have Mark check in with the other attorneys, and we'll see who's on point for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Additional questions or comments? All right. Before I turn it over to the city manager, Councilmember Gilman, thank you for reminding me to mention the incredible weekend we just had with Arts Walk. Olympia never disappoints when it comes to Arts Walk Weekend. I saw, when we first got down here, my family and I, we had bags in our hands within the first five minutes, and I mean that literally. There is all sorts of new vendors in town as well. The luminary procession was beautiful, saw lots of new species. It's always great to just see familiar faces and new faces throughout town. I even ran into a group of legislators who were, they rushed down to downtown when they were in recess just to, to be part of what was going on, and, and so we exchanged pleasantries and took a photo, and then, and then they had to run back. You know, it's just a, a really wonderful time to be in community with everyone, and it's a tradition that I love doing with my family every time we go down. It's just a reminder of how much older my daughter is getting. I have pictures from her as an itty-bitty baby at Arts Walk, and it's just a beautiful time. Shout out to everyone that participated. You've done a wonderful job, and look forward to seeing what you'll do in October for Arts Walk. And shout out also to Jules the Juggler. I look forward to seeing him on Fifth in Washington every year. It's also become a tradition. So thank you all for a wonderful weekend. Olympia, you, you do us proud. City manager Bernie.
Nothing to report. I do want to say that my favorite part of Arts Walk Friday night was I did run into the mayor and his family, and Priscilla bailed on them and walked with me down to meet my family for dinner, which is awesome. But just so we're clear, she didn't bail because she wanted to walk with me. She bailed because she wanted me to walk her to see Mrs. Bernie. So.
That's right. I forgot that we, you just left with her. And we were like, we should get Priscilla. She's been gone with Jay for quite a while. So any questions or comments for the city manager? All right. Seeing none. At this time, we're, we're gonna recess for five minutes, after which council will reconvene in room 423 for up to 90 minutes for an executive session pursuant to litigation and potential litigation, and also related to a personnel matter related to the city manager's evaluation. After the, the executive session, we will be adjourned for tonight.